Good evening, everyone. It's six o'clock on August the 2nd, 2022. At this time, I'll call the monthly meeting for the Board of Commissioners to order. Madam Clerk, do we have a quorum?
Yes, sir, we have a quorum.
All right, at this time, you all would please stand and recognize Kerry Melton to lead us into pledge and deliver the nice indication.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Lord, thank you for allowing us to be here tonight. I first want to thank you for the rain that you've brought to us. This is much-needed rain for our farmers and for the ground that we live on. Lord, I ask that you continue to protect those who protect us, in the military and our public safety officials. Lord, I ask you to guide our board in the decision-making here tonight and ask that all the decisions that they make be pleasing to you. I ask this in your precious name. Amen.
shall refrain from personal attacks and/or threats directed towards county staff, elected board members, or members of the public. Speakers shall be courteous in their language and presentation. Insults, profanity, use of vulgar language, or gestures or other inappropriate behavior are not allowed. The board is interested in hearing citizen concerns, yet speakers should not expect a response during the meeting in the form of comment, action, or deliberation. Topics requiring further investigation will be referred to the appropriate county agency.
Thank you. Mr. Williams? I believe this says casinos?
My name's Robert Williams, 1814 East Stagecoach Trail in Fallston. You just read something about your inappropriate behavior. I don't want to talk about that. There's been enough of that in here. Anyway, the casino. I guess most of you heard about the Wall Street Journal article and the Channel 9 News article about an appearance of wrongdoing to Casino, something about Jim Clyburn down in South Carolina, Nikki Haley, they're, I think Clyburn's brother, Haley's husband, were given shares in some kind of group called Kings Mountain Equipment Company. And their deal with Casino is they're going to get 20 cents out of every dollar that goes through the machines. So I don't know what they received for that gift, but I've sat here a lot of times in this very same room and watched the Indian folks and their entourage, including Wallace Cheves, who donated $5,800 to Eddie Holbrook's campaign in 2018. And I asked Mr. Cheves that night about that large donation. And he says, well, did I not give enough? I said, well, I don't think so. He didn't win. He lost. So I don't know. There's a lot of money floating around a casino and there's a lot of potential wrongdoing. And I remember when this casino first came to town, I saw a picture included a commissioner, the Indian chief, county manager, and Roger Holland. And it just seemed like where a lot of money changes hands, there's an opportunity for mischief. Federal investigators are involved. According to the Channel 9 and the Wall Street Journal article, I'm supposing federal investigators are here in Cleveland County because the casino is here in Cleveland County. Kings Mountain Equipment Supply Company is in Cleveland County. So I just, I just hope nobody goes to jail over this. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. At this time, I'll recognize County Manager Brian Empley.
Thank you, Commissioner Gordon. Several items for consideration, beginning with item A, which are minutes from your June 21 regular commissioner meeting. Those minutes are in your packet for review and consideration. Item B is from our Tax Administration Department. This is our annual settlement as authorized by General Statute 105373, specifically the order to collect, recognizing what the current year levy is and transitioning that to prior year and further authorizing staff to pursue collections. We concluded the year at 98.58% collections FY '22 year. So very pleased with that performance. Item C is from the Health Department. This is budget amendment number two on the year. This is request to budget $10,280 in grant proceeds received from partners, health management, and that will be used to, for staff training, specifically focused on substance abuse in that coalition. Item D is from our Planning Department. This is a request to set a public hearing for Tuesday, September the 6th to consider case 22-21. This is request to resume parcel 11527 from residential manufactured home parks to neighborhood business with a conditional use specific to recreational vehicle parks. The property is located at 205 Ferris Road in Kings Mountain. It's approximately 25 acres. This will be heard by the Planning Board. And then again, the request this evening is to set a public hearing for this board at your September 6th meeting. Item E is from our Legal Department. It's for consideration of exchange of real property. The parcel number is 16310. As the board will recall, over the last year, as we've been making improvements to some county-owned properties, specifically the, our collection sites, there's been a rezoning requirement. And to bring that rezoning into compliance with lot industrial, there were some screening modifications. And staff have worked with adjoining property owners to propose a potential land exchange, a swap of exactly .073 acres either way. The exchange is happening between Cleveland County and BND Enterprise. And again, these are, these are, the schematic is done. The land swap would be, is included. Those details are included in your packet for further review. Item F is from the Legal Department. This is an upgrade update to our document retention schedule, specific to Health and DSS. So the board's aware this, these publications are annualized from the state, depending on the agency. Again, these are specific to departments of Health and Human Services, but updating to be compliant with state recommendations. And finally, for consideration, item G, specific to economic development. We have a metal fabricating industry in Cleveland County that's expanding and adding jobs, tax base. As part of their expansion project, we have helped facilitate a grant through the North Carolina Department of Commerce. This is a building reuse grant that provides $8,000 per jobs. The total projected job creation is 20 jobs, so the total grant will be $160,000. Cleveland County acts as a grant recipient and flows through, which requires a resolution to the Department of Commerce. We've done this many times. There are requirements in the terms that require the jobs to be created before the funding flows, so there is no risk to the county. That concludes the very short consent agenda. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Brian. Commissioners, you've represented with the consent agenda. Is there any discussion?
No discussion to make a motion. We approve it as presented.
We have a motion in the second.
Rezone parcel 57853 from residential to general business. And the petitioner, Mr. Brown, is requesting that the board continue this hearing until the September 6th commissioner meeting. Mr. Brown has stated that his son is his manager and spokesperson for his other business and could not be here tonight due to a COVID diagnosis. And so Mr. Brown is, I believe he's here tonight, but he's requesting that the hearing be continued. And so the board needs to address that first.
I think with some conversation with other folks who have came to participate, we intend to open the public hearing and then also continue it to September the 6th. So anything that you wish to provide information to the board for consideration, you can do so at this time, and then we'll open and conduct and go from there.
The property for consideration, as I say, is parcel 57853. It's approximately 50 acres and is located at 1256 Cleveland Avenue. This is, of course, Highway 226 between Patterson Springs and Grover. The property is owned by ME Brown Enterprises, per the Cleveland County Tax Appraiser, and is currently vacant. Surrounding uses, as you can see, are mostly large vacant tracts of land as well as single-family residential on smaller lots. The surrounding zoning district, the zone district of this parcel is residential as is the surrounding zoning layer. And it also has the highway corridor overlay. And so as the board knows, you have the underlying zone district and then you have this highway corridor overlay that follows along more major highways that allows for certain commercial uses. It's not quite as extensive as our general business zoning district, but it does allow some commercial uses. And so this property enjoys the underlying zoning layer and that overlay. Now, the, the land use plan that the board recently adopted calls this area secondary growth. And in the secondary growth area, it is expected for the area to retain its rural and agricultural character, encouraging single-family residential to be on larger lots while promoting smaller lots within subdivisions and promoting small-scale commercial around major rural crossroads. The Planning Board heard this case last Tuesday, and the Planning Board voted three to one to recommend denial of the requested zoning map amendment. And I'll read you what they stated. The Planning Board stated that the requested change is inconsistent with the land use plan's description of where commercial uses should be located within the secondary growth area. And as I say, the land use plan expects this area to retain its rural character and that commercial uses should be around rural crossroads, not just along one, one highway. And so with that, Mr. Chairman, I'll be more than happy to answer any questions you all have.
Commissioners, do you have any questions at this point from Mr. Earl? All right, hear none. At this time, we'll open the public hearing. So anyone wishing to speak for or against planning department case 22-20, this is a request to rezone property at 1256 Cleveland Avenue from residential to general business. Please come forward, state your name and address.
Lisa James, 106 Silverado Drive. I live directly across from the property. I have 23 acres. There's four of us down that street. My neighbor has 30 some acres, and we have two retired couples. I have one.
It's Cleveland Avenue. And just from my professional background, I really have to look at that and go, the impact, I'm looking at the impact that's going to have on the community. The big impact I'm looking at is property values, number one. That's a personal thing I'm looking at. Number two, I'm looking at infrastructure. Can the roads, utilities, traffic flow, everything else? Is that part of 226 made for that? And I know there's a lot of great commercial property closer to 85 and indifferent, maybe heading back towards Patterson Springs. It'd be a better fit for a business, other than that piece of property right there. Then I'm looking at environmental impacts. We've got Buffalo Creek right there next door, the water table and everything else. The type of business, you know, whether it's an RV park or a smelting plant, they all impact, you know, air environmental infrastructure differently, whether it's air, water, anything else. So along with this, you know, we're in agreement with the Planning Board. We'd like to see it just stay where it's at, some of the way it is. And if there's any more discussion, I'd like to really see impact assessments, you know, risk assessments, perform impact assessments on what type of industry is, you know, thought about being placed there. Yeah, thank you. Any questions for me? Appreciate it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak for or against the planning board case 22-20? Request to rezone property at 1256 Cleveland Avenue from residential to general business. Please come forward, state your name.
If you cannot hear me clearly, let me know, and I will adjust my message. My name is Diane Villanueva. I live at 107 Silverado Drive, right across from that property. We moved there 16 years ago because it is quiet, peaceful. We can relax, enjoy ourselves, and not have to worry about crime, things like that. And as Lisa Jane said, the highway has gotten really busy. And if there's a business that goes in there, I don't know how that highway can handle the extra traffic that would come. And of course, it would just make it so much more louder and not so kind. And I would really like it not to change. Are there any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Sir, would you want to speak? On the back? Anyone else wanting to speak for or against the planning application?
Mr. Chair, if I may, I don't think Mr. Brown understood what we were going to do, that he said his son wouldn't be able to attend tonight. But this public hearing will be carried over and postponed, so you can wait.
It's going to be continued.
It's going to be continued. So if you choose not to speak, then your son can do it in the next time.
Anyone else wishing to speak for or against the application tonight? All right, with that, with none, seeing none, at this time, I'll ask the commissioners, if there's anyone inclined to make a motion to keep the public hearing open and continue the public hearing for case 22-20, which is a request to rezone property at 1256 Cleveland Avenue from residential to general business. So we would be asking to keep the public hearing open until Tuesday, September the 6th, 2022, at 6:00 PM, here in the Commissioners' chambers.
So moved.
I'll second it.
We have a motion second to hold the public hearing open until September 6th. Is there any other discussion? If not, all those in favor will indicate with a sign aye.
Aye.
Those opposed will say no. All right, so the public hearing is held open, and it'll be back on the agenda September the 6th. All right, with that, we'll move on to the next item. Next item on the agenda is the next planning case is 22-23. This is a request to rezone property at 3,052 Blacksburg Road from residential to neighborhood business. And I'll again recognize Henry, our zoning administrator, to come forward and present this case.
Mr. Chairman? So Travis and Kristen Hamrick are requesting a zoning map amendment for parcel 5258, and that will be from residential to neighborhood business. And this parcel is located at 3052 Blacksburg Road, which is Highway 198. It's approximately 60 acres, and as I stated, it is owned by Travis Hamrick and Kristen Hamrick. The parcel is currently zoned residential as is all around to the north, east, and west. And of course, to the south is South Carolina. And currently, the uses on the property, there is a home on the property, there is also a commercial fishing lake. And the surrounding area consists of, consists of a lot of rural residential uses. And this property also not only has the residential district, but it also has the highway corridor that we mentioned in the last case that has certain commercial allowances to it. This property is also in the secondary growth area, which, as I stated before, is expected for this area to retain its rural and agricultural character, encouraging single-family residential to be on larger lots and promoting small-scale commercial around major rural crossroads. The Planning Board, when they reviewed this case, they voted unanimously to recommend approval of the requested zoning map amendment. And their reasoning is that, their comments were that the requested change to neighborhood business is consistent with the land use plan and uses allowed in neighborhood business were compatible with the area. The Neighborhood Business District allows both residential uses and small, small-scale commercial uses that serve a neighborhood. And so the Planning Board felt that this was in compliance with the land use plan. And with that, I'd be more than happy to answer any questions you all have.
Thank you, Henry. Commissioners, do you have any questions for Henry at this time? I hear none. We'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against planning case 22-23, which is a request to rezone property at 3,052 Blacksburg Road from residential to neighborhood business? Please come forward and state your name and address. Anyone wishing to speak for or against planning case 22-23? Request to rezone property at 3,052 Blacksburg Road from residential to neighborhood business? Please come forward and state your name and address. Seeing no one wishing to speak, we'll now close the public hearing and back to the commissioners for any questions or discussion.
I guess I got one. And two, this property now is not in compliance due to the fishing lake, the little, I guess, shop that got on it and so forth. By rezoning, what it is will bring it more in compliance like we've been trying to do throughout the whole county. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Neighborhood businesses don't open it up to as many changes as, say, general business does, correct?
Correct. Neighborhood businesses, I like to think of it as the district in between commercial and your residential districts. It allows a little bit of both.
Mr. Chair, if there are no more questions, I make a motion we approve the rezoning.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and second to approve the request to rezone the property at 3,052 Blacksburg Road from residential to neighborhood business. Is there any discussion? All right, hear none. All those in favor will indicate with a sign aye.
Aye.
Those opposed will say no. Approved. Next item on the agenda, we're to the regular agenda. Next item is reevaluation update, and I'll recognize the County Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, just a brief moment to provide the board with an update. As you recall, meeting before last, we made the Board of Commissioners aware of a letter that we had received from the North Carolina Department of Revenue that amongst other things outlined that the certified sales ratio from 2021, which was measured from all real property transactions, about 341 of those during 2021 calendar year, appropriated our sales ratio at below 75%, which was outside of the allowable parameter statutorily of 15% plus or minus market value. And at the board direction, we continue to really do a lot of research work with our partners at Department of Revenue, understand our options, and, and compile data. And amongst other things, in conclusion, we feel comfortable at a staff level that the 2017 resolution passed by the board at that time that set our Cleveland County's revaluation cycle to four years will be compliant with Department of Revenue's parameters of a January 1st, 2025 mandatory revaluation. Unless the board would like to see a change there, no action is required at this time, and staff will begin working on that to be compliant with Department of Revenue's request.
All right, thank you, Brian. Commissioners, do you have any questions for Brian in regards to his report? All right, hear none. There's no action required. So next item, Commissioners, do you have anything you'd like to report?
I guess everybody's had a good vacation. It's had a chance to go on vacation. July has been a busy month for us, too. But I'd like to remind everybody, tonight is the national light out. The police are having an event over at the, I called it Pavilion a little while ago, and nobody seemed to know where it was, but it's the farmer's market. So if you have time, it's, it's till nine o'clock, and they have some hot dogs. And there's one also in Kings Mountain. Do you remember exactly where it is?
It's at their Pavilion.
Their Pavilion, okay. All right, both of them at the Pavilion.
Baker Ford. Factory Ford.
So, so anyway, if you, if you got a chance to go by there for a little bit, we really want to make sure that, that our police officers in the whole county understand that we are behind them 100%.
Anybody else?
No, it's been a busy week, you know, month. We went to the National Convention, picked up quite a few things. I just got emailed today asking me to serve again on the National Veterans Council. And I think that you guys are going to the state thing in the next couple of weeks, so it's still going to be a busy time right now, between now and school getting started up. So, let's all be careful with the kids out there going to school in the next few weeks, and buses up down the road.
Brian, or any staff, anybody got anything? All right, with that, that brings us to the end of the agenda. The last item is recess to reconvene. So, let me read this and tell you what we're doing, and we'll seek a motion to do that. So, the next meeting of the Cleveland County Board of Commissioners will be held on Monday, August 8th, 2022, at 6:00 PM. This will be a joint meeting with the Cleveland County School System. The meeting will be held, we located at the location of the school board meeting. So, we, our meeting will be held in conjunction with the school board at 400 West Warren Street for a joint meeting, as I said earlier, with the Cleveland County School Board. So, with that, I entertain a motion to recess to reconvene on August the 8th, 2022, beginning at 6:00 PM, in conjunction with the Cleveland County Schools.
Set moved.
Second.
So, we have a motion, second. All those in favor will say aye. Opposed will say no. All right, we're in recess until August the 8th.